Call the meeting to order, please stand for the pledge allegiance.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Board member Baker is unable to be with us this evening, so they'll move to speak for partaking in votes tonight. Move on to the approval of the minutes of the meeting held March 28th, March 30th, and April 6th. Do I have a motion to approve?
So moved.
Second.
I have a motion second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. We didn't have anybody signed up to address the board, so move on to approval of the agenda. Do I have a motion to approve?
So moved, second.
Jinx. I have a motion and a second. I'll let Beth figure out who is first on each. All those in favor of the agenda signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. We are approved. On to the good news report, and Dr. Stavum.
Yeah, so tonight we have two good news reports, and the first one is being presented by our Sioux Falls School District Library Coordinator Cory Erickson. And Cory, along with some other friendly faces that I'm going to ask you to introduce are in the audience tonight. They're part of the First Initial Everybody Reads Planning Committee. And they're here to give you a recap of how the first year in the community-wide reading initiative ended up. So thank you for coming tonight.
Good evening. With me tonight, I have a few people who helped spearhead our reading initiative. I have Stephanie Haig from John Harris, she's a librarian there, and I have Jenny Westera, who's our librarian from Laura Wilder. Also, Megan Daly, who was very helpful in getting our tracker implemented on our website. And then in the back, we have Carly with you, who was very instrumental in the promotion of this on social media. So last summer, Dr. Stavum brought forth an idea of wanting to build literacy and reading in our community. Librarians got together and partnered with Sioux Land, the public library, and brainstormed ideas before coming up with Everybody Reads, an initiative to build a community of readers from ages zero to 100 and beyond. Everybody Reads ran for the month of March where students, staff, parents, and other community members logged their reading. They filled out a leaf for every book that they read as a visual representation of the progress on their tree. Working with the district and the city web design teams, we had a tracker that updated daily with the number of books logged. Our grand total for the books read during March was 382,755, a number that we didn't even consider feasible to reach if you would have asked us what we expected. In front of you, you're seeing a slideshow of many of the finished trees from around our district. Not only did this initiative bring out a reader in all of us, but it also brought out the creativity in our buildings. There were so many outstanding trees that were so fun to watch blossom over the month. In one case, Laura Wilder Elementary had their tree wrap around their entire school, both upstairs and downstairs. There's a fun video that they posted on their website and Facebook page that we encourage you to check out. As we look into the future, we'll examine ways to improve this and continue to build the community of readers. Based on some initial feedback, many said that this was worthwhile and that we hope to do it again. A thanks goes out to Mackin and Overdrive for helping sponsor the initiative. A thank you to Dr. Stavum and Mayor Tenhaiken for taking the time to help with the promotional video. A thank you to the building administrators for their support of this in their schools. And also a big thank you to all the librarians and library staff who did the heavy lifting of counting and getting the leaves up on the trees each day. It's their work that really made this a success. And a big thank you to those that I've mentioned earlier, because they're the ones who really spearheaded it and came up with the idea. I can't thank any of them enough for all the work that they put into this. And thank you, board, for allowing me to speak.
Thank you Cory. It was just a great promotion to see, and people were so excited about it. You could see the reactions on social media about encouraging the students and community to read. So thank you for helping spearhead this all.
Nice job. I looked at our IPC tree here. We are just a springbly budded out tree compared to the full blossoms, but we were participating. It was really fun. And I think it was nice because it was adults and children, and the mayor is the one who reminded us. He has a patron who contacts him regularly to let her know she's still reading at the public library and she is well over 100. So that was fun too, to think about the range of readers. So nice job to all of you and to our building level teams.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Oops, that's me again. Next one. Next good news report is Principal Kaler from George McGovern Middle School. And they're going to highlight in our school spotlight tonight, the good work that's happening out at McGovern. So I will turn it over to you.
Thank you, Dr. Stavum. Thank you, board, for giving me a chance to share a little bit about George McGovern with you this evening. Just some demographics to get us started here. We are approximately 732 students this year, about 91 staff. And as all of you are aware, we are a very diverse school with 60% student diversity within our building. And we are proudly serving the Northwest corner. Now we have a high school out there to help us, so. This is our mission statement. In my, this is my fourth year with George McGovern. In the second year, we took on the initiative of redoing our mission statement. And I'm going to build this whole presentation around our core values, which we did those two years ago. We were really off to a good start with that until the pandemic hit, and then we had to put everything on pause. But we were able to wrap it up before the start of last year, and we are now trying to live up to this mission statement on a daily basis in our building. So as I mentioned, I thought I actually even started to put together a presentation that was statistics and numbers all about George McGovern, and then I thought maybe it'd be better to try and come out and tell some stories. And so I want to tell some stories around our core values, and I hope that you will indulge me in that. Our core values are part of our new logo, which is what you see in front of you there, and courage, honor, kindness, and resilience. And so I'm going to start tonight with courage. And for courage, I chose to tell you a little bit about our Youth Entrepreneurs Program that we've been doing the last couple of years. It's really been building to a great number of students participating this year. Within this program, students are learning to become young entrepreneurs. They go through the process of developing a business. Once they develop that business model, they have to then come back to the team and ask for a loan. The money is given to them through the Young Entrepreneurs Program. And once they take that loan out, they have to account for all of their expenses. We actually charge them rents for their space when we get to our market day, and they are required to clean up. And if they don't, then they have to pay for our custodians cleanup. And so they learn as much about a business process as we can. They talk about many of those other things like insurance and other expenses that exist. But of course, we don't make them purchase any insurance at this point. But if they make a profit off their business, once they've paid all their expenses, that profit is theirs. And they get to keep that money from the Young Entrepreneurs Program. So a couple pictures. We just recently had a market day. This is from last week's market day. Many of the statistics were not in yet, so I'm going to share with you a little bit about our previous market day. Our first semester market day in the eighth grade, we had 23 groups that were selling items. Each of those groups was able to pay back their loan. And in all, the students profited just under $2,300. The largest profit for any one student was $244. This was a young lady who did her business completely on her own. She made some of her own products and sold those. The great story that comes with this young lady is her teacher shared with me that she was, she would never speak up in their Young Entrepreneur meetings and was always listening to what everybody else said. Since this market day, she now is the voice that everybody else is listening to when they get to their YE meetings. And she's starting to show that in the classroom too. She's starting to become a more powerful voice in the classroom. The least that any group profited was $19. So very successful for them, and like I said, they do get to keep that money. Our next core value is honor. I thought President Mickelson would love this picture as much as I do. Our students have had a many great opportunities this year to go visit some college campuses, thanks to promising futures. And we've taken some sports teams, but we've also done academic visits to Dakota State, South Dakota State, and USD. We're working on some additional visits here in town with some of the other universities here. But I chose honor because we talk about demonstrating respect for these people, this time, this place, and ourselves. And we want the students to know that we honor and respect ourselves by doing the best that we can on a daily basis and making sure that we're achieving and striving and achieving the best that we can. The real pull to me for honor with our college visits was some of the information that we receive back from the universities. It's always scary to send 50, 75, 90 middle schoolers to a college campus and ask them to be on their best behavior and do all of the things that we expect them to do when they're honoring others. But we heard numerous comments back from chaperones, the people at the universities, about how well behaved these students were, how respectful they were, and how much they took in every moment they could of that visit. The best comment I heard was from President Don at SDSU. And that was that with many visits that they have every year, he felt that our students were some of the best that have ever visited the campus, to include those who are coming there to actually choose that university, so. Couple more pictures of our visits here. I do want to point out just one other thing there. The bottom right-hand corner, those two young ladies pointing to the honor roll. They were standing in front of that honor roll at USD, and they made the comment that someday they're going, this is going to be us. And so really powerful moment for the teachers that were there with them. I also noticed that to apologize for this next slide, kindness. It did not have, I had a picture. I had some technical difficulties this morning. My docking station decided that it was going to quit working. And so when I was trying to get this to Carly, I must not have got that last picture in there. Those two young ladies and four other ladies are who I want to talk about with kindness. We are generous towards others. We seek first to understand and then to be understood. And what, what I want to focus on with kindness is a cultural group that those two young ladies and their four colleagues have started with us this year. They came to us, and instead of coming to us disappointed or upset about what we were doing to celebrate the different cultures in our building, they came asking questions. And they came seeking to be, to understand our standpoint and then to be understood themselves. And they did a great job presenting to Mr. Hudson, Mrs. Moore, and myself on what they would like to do. And they are now spearheading a campaign to create some cultural days for us and to add some things each and every year that will continue on. Unfortunately, they're all eighth graders, so I'm trying to get them to bring in a few seventh graders to help them. Resilience, we stick with it no matter how difficult the struggles become because we know the struggles lead to growth. And what I was looking at here is a new program we've started this second semester called Eagle Work Completion. We had a number of students who were not completing their work. Obviously, that affects some of our academic scores and some of those things that we are there trying to do every day. And so we looked at, how do we do this in the most positive way? And what we've done is we've adjusted our schedule. And on Wednesdays, we provide some additional time at the end of the day for those who are behind in work to have access to all of their teachers. They get a chance to work through the things that they're missing. But in addition, all those students who are not on our Eagle Work Completion get to come do a celebration. The last couple of weeks, Mr. Hutchinson and I have been running Celebration in the gym. And we've been doing kind of a minute-to-win-it type thing with, students need to make a layup, a free throw, a three-pointer, and a half-court shot. And as they get to that three-point line, we're using some donation money to provide them with some gifts. We've given away over $200 in the last two weeks, the largest prize being a $50 gift to a kid who hit a half-court shot, so. What we're seeing is it's starting to build momentum. Our lists are down about 30 to 40% from when we started. So that's awesome to see from a numerical standpoint. But even more impressive is multiple teachers have come to me and talked about how they see it in their classroom. And the kids are now engaged in the classroom. They're using their time when they have it to work, and they're using their time in directed studies, so. On that note, some academic successes we've had so far. In our first semester, we had eight students in the high school biology that had a just over a 95% semester test average. 22 students taking Spanish, just about at 78%, and just over 80% for our 20 students that were taking high school algebra. From the flip side of those students taking the accelerated classes, our students that need a little more help, we have 34 students that moved out of reading intervention in our first review. And we're in the process of reviewing that right now. And it looks like we'll probably have at least that many or more that will move again this time, so. My final slide is just a parent testimonial, and I won't read that to you. I'll allow you guys to read that when you get a chance. The three sections that I highlighted just speak to, again, what I believe are our core values and how this parent sees our core values coming to light when their student joined us this year. This is not only a new student as a sixth grader, but also they moved in from out of state. And mom and dad have stopped all three of us, Sarah, myself, and Richie, at one event or another to tell us how much they appreciate the teachers that George is working with and how much they appreciate everything that we have going on, so. With that, do you have any questions for me?
Well, just thank you to your team. You guys are doing great things and adjusting to what the students need to be successful, so we appreciate those things. And I'm very familiar with some of your after-school programming as well. And I just think it's wonderful what you're doing out there to, you know, give additional things and opportunities for them after school, too. So thank you.
Thank you.
Nice work.
Thank you.
I have a few random Facebook friends who have students that are there that maybe their older kids didn't go there, and now with boundary changes and things like that. And I've just been so encouraged watching new parents step in and really try to support, whether it's through the PTO, I've seen Spiritware, I've seen all sorts of things. And I think when parents start engaging other parents, that really says a lot about administration too, because you're delegating, but it's because they want to and they want to support their school. And so I know when I kind of scroll through some of those things, that it makes me feel good because I know that there are great people, great parents at that school who are doing everything they can to make sure that all students succeed, not just their own, and really trying to build that community. So kudos to you guys on that as well.
Thank you. I appreciate that. It is nice. The PTO is starting to grow, and we're starting to get some really good engagement from parents that have even actually been there for a couple of years already that, like you said, now that we've got some fresh faces, we're starting to see more. Thank you all for this opportunity.
Moving on, no new conflicts of interest presented. I'll move on to the consent agenda, items 12A through E. Do I have a motion to approve?
So moved. Second.
I have a motion second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Onto the supplemental consent agenda, item 13A, approval claims at Sanford. Do I have a motion to approve?
So moved.
Second.
I have a motion second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
That passes with one abstention from board member Ryder. Onto reports to the superintendent. First, we'll have our public hearing on Spanish two, of course. And internship waiver.
Good evening. We do have a couple of waivers that we are reapplying for this year. The first one is for students who have The first one is for students who possess the skills to take the Spanish two course equivalency exam. Students who score an eighty-five percent or higher would then be eligible for that high school credit and the state would waive the seat time requirement for that course. And if the state department of education grants the district's request, this waiver would be in effect through June thirtieth of 2027. So I would ask the board to move forward with that waiver. Do you have any questions?
Can we just do the hearing for both right now? We'll open up for both and we'll do the movements on both.
That sounds good, sure. So the second waiver is regarding career internships. High school students can replace up to two credits toward graduation requirements with an internship experience. The Sioux Falls School District believes that every student deserves a course of study that allows a student to learn in deep, meaningful and practical ways. The internship or apprenticeship program matches students' interests and aptitudes to provide an authentic educational experience. And again, if the state department of education grants the district's request for this waiver, this would be in effect through 2027 as well.
Thank you. I will open up the public hearing for both waivers for admin interns in Spanish two. Seeing that, I will close the public hearing. Any questions or comments for Kristen?
Well, good opportunities for our students.
Exactly. I'll first move on to, on the Spanish two course equivalency. Do I have a motion to acknowledge the public hearing and to, for, to reduce graduation requirements and use the Spanish two as well as the internship apprentice experience and direct the administration to pursue the waiver from the South Dakota Department of Ed.
So moved.
Second.
I have a motion second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign. Those are both approved. Thank you very much, Kristen.
You're welcome.
Are you doing our applied arts training?
You're stuck with me for a little while.
That's good.
Yes. So my next report is about the sixth through twelfth grade applied arts curriculum study. As we know, that today's cutting-edge, rigorous and relevant career and technical education prepares students for a wide range of high-wage, high-skill and high-demand careers. CTE prepares students for careers that require a varying levels of education from high school to post-secondary certificates and two- and four-year college degrees. The Applied Arts Committee met beginning in the fall of 2020 and developed a vision statement, a mission statement and goals. And you can see that in the vision statement, that we want to challenge students with rigor, engage them with relevance and educate them through hands-on learning to prepare them to meet the demands of our changing world. We also want to prepare them to think critically, problem solve, innovate, communicate and collaborate. And then the mission statement goes along with that in actively engaging students in authentic, relevant learning experiences to prepare them for our changing world. And the applied arts goal statements came from the, the state categories that they have regarding applied arts. And those are developing awareness of modern workplace technology, developing competency in human relations, life and communication skills, exploring career pathways, applying technology to life and work, acquiring literacy, creativity and problems, problem-solving skills to explore science, technology, engineering and math, fostering community and business partnerships and equipping students with 21st century skills to prepare them for in-demand occupations and high-growth industry sectors. At the middle school level, the curriculum is offered as part of encore or exploratory programs. Sixth and seventh grade students take one quarter of CTE and eighth-grade students select CTE as a semester elective encore class. These classes use modules that place heavy emphasis on careers in science, technology, engineering and math. And these modules require students to communicate, think critically and problem solve as a team. The middle school CTE curriculum aligns to many of the classes at the CTE Academy and was adopted in 2018 when Pittsco changed their platform and redesigned their former modules. So because they made that update in 2018, they have a smaller curriculum adoption than you might normally see. But these are some of the resources that they need to continue to offer students those module experiences. At the high schools, we have introductory classes that lead students on to those more advanced classes at the CTE Academy. By offering those introductory courses, it gives students a chance to see if this is an area they would like to pursue with higher-level courses. So the chart in front of you lists some of those introductory courses that we find at the, at the four high schools in town. Home maintenance, the beginning of woodworking and welding and automotive courses. Then our CTE has quite a few courses in the applied arts area that have industry-standard equipment and provide students with more hands-on, relevant, career-oriented learning opportunities. And you can see that we have carpentry and woodworking, welding, aviation, all kinds of things related to automotive, from brakes and suspension and steering, electronics, diesel technology, auto body repair. So really a wide variety of options for students. With the course options for these classes, there are minimal resources that we picked as far as textbook and online resources because these are such hand-line courses, hands-on courses. But these are some of the resources that will help support students in the classroom and also give them some online access to texts when necessary. The bulk of the adoption with the applied arts comes in capital outlay. And you can see that we've used central services and bid out many of these items. They aren't listed here individually, but I've learned a lot about saws and all kinds of tools that I was not familiar with before, but will really provide our students with that hands-on experience. I stand by for questions if you have any about the applied arts curriculum study.
No, it's just always amazing to me how much opportunity we do have at CTE. And it's just a wonderful experience that students really should take advantage of in our district. I just think it's such an underused entity.
I think at least twice a year, right? They have open houses out there. So for anybody that's watching at home, I would pay attention to those because, as you can see, we're really investing a lot of time and resources into making those programs great. And then just down the street is Southeast Tech where you can get a lot of those, you know, actually get your associate's degree or certificates and many of those things. And look on any website right now for jobs and those are the jobs that you will see that are in high need. So you will probably have a job before you even graduate, plus great skills along the way. So.
So while our juniors were just testing, we did have freshman students who were out taking tours of CTE and sophomores took tours of Southeast Technical College. So helping students see all those opportunities and make those connections. And as you also stated, many of the courses that we do offer at CTE, students can earn credit at STC while working towards that degree, which is a great opportunity and pathway for students.
Wonderful. Thank you.
Seeing no other questions or comments, do I have a motion to approve the recommended applied arts curriculum adoption for the 2223 school year?
So moved.
Second.
I have a motion second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign. That is approved.
I have one more for you, and that is the computer science study that we are completing this year. As you know, computer science is an essential skill and we really want to ensure that students have high-quality computer science education that prepares them for personal and professional success in a digital world. Again, we had a committee made up of teachers, administrators, parents and community members that worked together to write a vision and, vision and mission statement and establish goals for the computer science study. The vision statement is that all students should thrive successfully, responsibly and effectively in a technology-infused society. We envision all students to be digital entrepreneurs of tomorrow's technologies. And the overlying mission statement was to prepare students to become tomorrow's digital innovators, leaders and engaged citizens through the effective use of technology. Along with that, we established some goals and those include for students to be empowered learners, computational thinkers, digital citizens, innovative designers, creative communicators, global collaborators and knowledge constructors. And we did have some help with those as those came from the International Society for Technology and Education. At the middle school, computer technology skills are taught in computer technology classes at each grade level. Computer technology classes in grades six and seven are nine-week classes taught every other day over a semester. And in grade eight, they are eighteen-week classes taught every, every day during the semester. Middle school courses focus on the strands of becoming a digital citizen, computational thinker and creative communicator. Through these standards, students use technology as consumers and producers and learn safety procedures in the digital world. This table below describes the projected costs for materials. Oh, I'm sorry. This, sorry, this, this slide explains what you see at each level. The next one, there we go. That shows the projected costs for materials, capital outlay and professional development for the middle school level. Although highs, at the high school level, computer science is not a graduation requirement, we are working to provide many unique learning opportunities for students to enhance their interest in the computer science field. Probably the most popular recent additions include animation and cybersecurity. And we continue to develop opportunities for dual credit through DSU, which is an exciting opportunity and pathway for students. During the study, teachers met according to the courses they teach and also with community members and university professors to ensure the courses offered will help prepare students for the future. Oops. This table lists below the resources needed, the cost of the resources for each computer science course. So again, there are fairly minimal curriculum costs for the, the number of courses that we offer in computer science. We do take advantage of a wide variety of resources that are of no cost, that are online to keep up with the innovation and application for today's science world. And computer science is one of those unique areas where it really doesn't work for us to wait every seven years in this adoption. So we will continue to study and work towards making sure this pathway stays up to date with the latest technology and applications. And our university partners like DSU have been instrumental in helping us really align what makes sense to provide students with the greatest opportunities to pursue those Okay, I stand by for questions if you have any about computer science.
So is our high school participation increasing in these courses?
Some courses are increasing. Animation and cybersecurity continue to be very, fairly popular. The more classes that are geared towards maybe preparing students for the workforce as far as spreadsheets and those kinds of things.
So personal beauty.
Aren't quite as appealing to students right now. But we're, we're working to really market to students how important those skills are in almost, in so many career opportunities. And I think with DSU building their new facility, I'm hoping that will help spark interest for students as well.
Seeing no other questions, do I have a motion to approve the computer science curriculum adoption for implementation during the 2223 school year?
So moved.
Second.
I have a motion second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign. That is approved. Thank you.
Good evening. I'm bringing forward to you tonight, the Sioux Falls School District calendars. There are two proposals for tonight for the, the school board to consider and approve. The first of which is changes to the 2122 school year calendar, our current school year calendar, due to the inclement weather day that we had missed in December. And the second of which is the new adoption of the 2324 school year calendar. So I'll bring both of those forward. We'll, we'll look at each one of those separately. So first of all, the 2122 school year calendar, there is one date change to look at on that calendar. This is really to present the recommended change for that 2122 scal, 2122 school year calendar that was adopted two years ago. And this report contains the recommended changes to the 2122 school year calendar to account for the one day that we missed of canceled school due to inclement weather. That was December tenth of 2021. And so the recommendation on this to be considered is to move the final student day from Tuesday, May twenty-fourth to Wednesday, May twenty-fifth. And the teacher work day from Wednesday, May twenty-fifth to Thursday, May twenty-sixth. And that again is due to that one day that was missed per the inclement weather. The calendar, the only changes to that calendar would be the end of the school year moving those two days. And you see that updated calendar here. So the administrative recommendation is to approve the one-day change per the agreement that we have on the school year calendar. And I would stand by for any questions.
Have you looked at the radar for this?
Yeah, exactly. I'm like, are we gonna jinx ourselves?
And we are gonna be absolutely fine. Like I told one of the administrative groups, we will not cancel, so don't even consider thinking about that. Now, if we were West River, we may have to consider that, but just gonna be a light little rain.
I feel like I just got a time hop of seven years ago was the ice storm.
Yeah, it was.
Okay, just checking.
So we have checked the weather and we feel confident that we did not need to wait one more board meeting.
Any other questions or comments?
No.
Seeing that, do I have a motion to approve the recommended changes to the 2122 school calendar for adoption?
So moved.
Second.
I have a motion, and second, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign.
So the second calendar we will, we will look at this evening is the 2324 school year calendar that comes as a recommendation from the calendar committee. And the purpose of this report, obviously to bring forward to you that 2324 recommendation. And this does fall in line with our community engagement area where we do utilize the engagement of our community and their feedback in creating these calendars. We utilize that significantly in previous years and we continue to base it on that and the feedback from our variety of groups that serve on the calendar committee. And I'll go through that calendar committee group formation here momentarily. First of all, the recommendation, the guidance we adhered to and the changes we made were based on the following. So we have maintained for the last five years now, where we start the school year with a two-day week for the students, which is a Thursday and Friday, followed by that four-day week. And then that extended Labor Day weekend, which was part of the compromise that we worked out a few years back. And then after that, we come back for that four-day week again. And that allows us to be able to get enough days in to, to do the second bullet that is up there to make sure that we is up there to make sure that we, in the school year prior to that Memorial Day weekend. That was another part of the feedback that we had from our community as we went through and received over 15,000 responses a few years ago based on the calendar. The third on there, we did have significant input from our community members a few years ago on no student attendance days for both Native American Day and Martin Luther King Junior Day. So that was implemented this year. We will take that one step further this next year. We will start now also that our teaching staff and our nine-month staff will not be in attendance on that Native American Day and Martin Luther King Junior Day as well. So that is started next year's calendar, and it'll be carried over to this 23-24 school year calendar. The compensatory day, we worked through that as well. That's usually in March, and it corresponds to the boys' state tournament that year of 23-24 and the 24th school year. It'll switch from year to year between the girls' state tournament or the boys' state tournament, depending on which one is this side of the state, East River. That does help us significantly when that tournament is in Sioux Falls, being held in Sioux Falls, because of the number of subs that we would need to utilize and the individuals that'd be missing school on that day already. So we have correlated that to that state basketball tournament. We also moved the January 15th in-service date to February. And you can see by the last bullet on that page, that has helped us actually with our elementary schools to be able to utilize some of that afternoon to do parent-teacher conferences, because some of those elementary classes are not able to get it done in the two nights. So they're able to utilize part of that afternoon of the in-service. We have in-service in the morning, district in-service. The high school and middle schools will continue with in-service for the remainder of that day, but then the elementary schools will be able to utilize that afternoon or part of that afternoon to complete parent-teacher conferences, and then the two evenings as well. And so by moving it from, away from the Martin Luther King Junior Day, we're able to go straight into the evening as well. You can see some of the, the more important dates that we have. The first day of students would be August 24th. Again, the no-school day on Native American Day, January 11th will be the end of that first semester. The 15th would be Martin Luther King Junior Day. March 15th is the comp day for the boys' state basketball. The compensation day actually is for the parent-teacher conferences, but we base it on that day next to the boys' state basketball tournament for that year. And then May 19th is graduation. You also recall, next year is the first year that we will have graduation earlier than the end of the school year, so it takes it off that Memorial Day weekend as well. And so in correlation with that, graduation would be on May 19th, and the last student day would be May 22nd. Again, that should leave us time in case there's an inclement weather day that we can still utilize during that same week and have the final day be during that week, and, and the teacher work day still on that Friday if we had an inclement weather day. The committee participation, as I'd stated, we have 31 members that are on our calendar committee, and we do have representation from across all groups within our school district, from administration, clerical, contract employees, custodians, managers, EA's, human resources, information technology services, Kids, Inc. And then we also have parents. We have six parents to serve on the calendar committee and our two school board members along with our SFEA representation and specialists. We have teachers, two teachers that serve at each of the building levels as well on our calendar committee. So you can see it's a great representation of our community and our school district that serve on the calendar committee. In summary, the calendar, the calendar committee reviewed the information submitted by the committee, various groups that they represented on the committee and previous survey feedback from our stakeholders. The calendar committee approved by a vote of 26 to zero the proposed 23-24 school year calendar. So our administrative recommendation for this is to approve the 23-24 school year calendar based on the calendar committee's work and recommendation as detailed in the attachments. And again, there's a look at the calendar. You'll see that it is very similar to next year's calendar and this year's. Obviously, those changes I went through, the significance portion of that would be the graduation date from this year's calendar and where that in-service falls. I stand by for any questions.
Any questions?
I appreciate, I know a lot of families appreciate too, that this gets put out a year in advance so that people can make plans for whatever it is that they have going on in their lives. I would also point out that the graduation times are at the bottom of the calendar as well. I know I personally have had a hard time finding them, so now I know they're there too. So it rotates every year.
Every year it rotates.
Yes. So.
So whoever is last shall be first the next year.
Seeing no other comments or questions, do I have a motion to approve the 23-24 school year calendar based on the calendar committee's work and recommendation?
So moved.
Okay, I have a motion second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. That is approved. Thank you.
As you know, our 2023 budget process began in November, at which time the board set the guidelines and timelines for the committees to follow during the budget process. Starting in December, 19 subcommittees prepared around 100 budgets in December, January, and February that were reviewed by the district budget committee on March 17th to make recommendations to the school board. Board members Baker and Ryder were members of that committee as well. Then in, on March 30th and April 6th, the board held work sessions to go over the details of the budget, and that leads us to tonight where we have our hearing and then tentative approval of the budget. So just real briefly to cover what we've gone over in the previous two meetings, the five-year plan, the five-year general fund plan spends into the fund balance by $3.8 million in FY '23. It includes a $4.25 million transfer from the capital fund to the general fund. The projected fund balance in FY '27, we always look five years out, is 7.7% and growing. The budget plan also includes the extension of the 2019 Finance Action Network recommendation of laddering opt-outs to replace the $7.5 million opt-out that expired this year in 2022. This plan calls for a $1.8 million 10-year opt-out beginning in 2023 as projected by the FY '22-22 five-year plan. The total opt-out in 2023 is proposed to be $11 million. In summary, the district's tax-supported budget, which are the general, special ed, capital fund, and bond redemption funds, is $303.5 million next year. For the district's homeowners, the school levy is projected to decrease by 12 cents in 2023. The average school property tax increase over the last 23 years for a typical house in the Sioux Falls School District is approximately 1.4% per year. The administrative recommendation is to acknowledge the public hearing and tentatively approve the FY '23 school district budget to allow human resources to offer employee contracts with the understanding that the budget will be brought forward for final adoption and certification of levies at the annual meeting held July 11th, 2022. Thank you.
I'll first open it up for public hearing. Anyone from the public would like to make any comments about the budget? Seeing none, I'll close the public hearing. Any comments, questions on board? Yeah, just, we've had.
We talked and talked and talked.
Yeah, we've had two works, for the public who doesn't know, we've had two work sessions that were also open to the public for that, so we've discussed and had a lot of questions on that. So this budget takes into consideration what federal funds that we've had over the last few years due to COVID and making sure that we can continue those going, going forward and not overdoing it, not leaving us off a cliff, things that can be sustainable going forward. So Todd Beek and the budget committee and Dr. Saban have worked very hard on making sure we're investing in things that have direct supports to our students, but yet that we can continue on doing, making sure we're serving our community and students the best way we can. So seeing no other questions or comments, do I have a motion to acknowledge the public hearing and tentatively approve the FY '23 school district budget to allow human resources to offer employee contracts with the understanding that the budget will be brought forward for adoption and certification of levies at the annual meeting held July 11th, 2022?
So moved.
Second.
I have a motion second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, same sign. That is approved. Onto the opt-out.
Thank you. As I alluded to a minute ago, in 2019, we called together the Finance Action Network to look at our expiring $7.5 million opt-out and look for solutions, what we should do with that opt-out. That Finance Action Network was made up of three of us from, from the district as resources, and then the, and then some business leaders in the finance area especially. They were Sarah Andrews from Schonemann's, Jason Ball from The Chamber, Keith Severson from Ide Bailey, and Bob Timian from Ramkota Companies, and Becky Witrock from Geotech. And they came up with several conclusions. I'll just give you a couple of the main ones. One, one was to look at a 10-year target amount of around $15 million in 2019 in, in opt-out capacity. That's reasonable in order to maintain an opt-out used at about 5.2% of the budget and also maintain a 2% contingency for the district. And then they, they also looked at, instead of opting out for $7.5 million and having that come up for expiration every 10 years is what that opt-out was for, look at an opt-out laddering approach, similar to what you might do with CDs or other items, financial instruments, and where you opt out for smaller amounts and you just inflate them annually, and then you, you've got, you've always got that, so you can always plan ahead five years down the road and not worry about an impending $7.5 million opt-out that may or may not be passed. So based on that input from the Finance Action Network, the school board opted out for $1.5 million in 2020, then $1.6 in 2021, and $1.7 million in 2022. They didn't affect the opt-out, we, the opt-out we went for, we just, we kept it at $9.1 million of the plan for $11 million in 2023. So as part of that plan, we're just recommending opting out for $1.8 million in 2023 as the $7.5 million expires, which will give the board $11.6 million of opt-out availability in 2023. That's down from 12.5. That was available in 2019 when we first looked at this. Through the budget process, the committee, budget committee is recommending accessing $11 million of the opt-out in 2023. So the administrative recommendation is to approve the resolution you have in your documents. You should probably read it. I can read it, or whoever wants to make the motion can read it. I don't care.
You can.
Here's the proposed resolution. The governing board of the Sioux Falls School District, 49-5, do state that the above-said board is unable to operate under the tax limitation measure currently in statute in the general fund. We therefore opt out of such tax limitation, the amount of $1.8 million, starting with calendar year 2022 taxes payable in calendar year 2023. This opt-out will be for 10 years, which will be through taxes payable in calendar year 2032. This action has been taken by the board and approved by at least two-thirds vote of the board. This decision may be referred to a vote of the people upon a petition signed by at least 5% of the registered voters in the district and filed with the governing body within 20 days of the first publication of this decision. Unless this action is referred to a vote of the people and reversed by such vote, this resolution authorizes the county auditors to spread an excess levy to raise tax dollars in the above-stated amount.
Any questions for Todd? Seeing none, do I have a motion to approve the resolution?
So moved.
Second.
I have a motion second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. The opt-out resolution is approved. Anything else for the district board? Seeing none, do I have a motion for adjournment?
So moved.
Second.
I have a motion second for adjournment. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed, same sign. We are adjourned.